Ready when you are.
All right. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota -- my mic's up. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order today, Monday, June 30th. Adam, will you please call the roll?
Mr. D.
Here.
Ms. Casper.
Here.
Ms. French.
Here.
Mr. Horton.
Present.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes. All right. We're now going to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and we have two of our students out there and if they just can start it from the audience, that would be fabulous if they are so inclined. I should have asked them ahead of time. You ready? Go ahead.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the recovery for religious sins, one nation under God, made of beautiful, liberty and justice.
Thank you.
Fabulous job.
Nice job.
Fabulous job.
Good job.
You made us so much better. Thank you. That was a perfect way to start our meeting. Thanks for just jumping in. So for Board President's comments, I just actually have something I want to share. I had the opportunity to listen to a lecture this past week from the president of Dartmouth and she mentioned that as a almost two-year president of a college, of the Ivy League College, she was the -- had the third longest tenure of anyone. So it was talking about the challenges of leadership. But there's a quote that she said that I wanted to share because I thought it applied beyond just colleges. And it's, she said, "If we keep showing up for our students, for the truth and for the future, you'll be able to move humanity forward in ways that we cannot conceive of today." And then she said, "You can't ask them," meaning leadership, "to get everything right, but you have to ask for clear and transparent values and the process that iterates to a better outcome." And I thought that those were powerful words and what we're all trying to achieve in leadership for our students, so I just wanted to share that with everyone today. And with that, Dr. Whitley.
So exciting time of the year. Summer is a time where we're kind of ending out a year, beginning a new year. Actually tomorrow's July 1st, so the start of the new fiscal year. And that's when summer kind of becomes the thing of the past and you're in more reality. Just in the middle of hiring season, so finishing out that so that we can start strong with our new staff members. And then also, as you know, been working really diligently on master facilities, which we'll continue to talk about tonight. But really just next week, Ms. Fuller and I set, we'll be working on setting the theme for next year for convocation and going forward. So again, putting a bow tie on today so that tomorrow we can start looking forward to the, to the next school year, which will be here before you know it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Zing.
As Dr. Whitley mentioned, we finally made it to the end of another fiscal year. This is a large meeting for a lot of the fiscal year-end approvals that we have. So more to come on my, I've got a couple of presentations later, so I'll save a lot for them.
All right. And now we have the opportunity to recognize our students who are here to represent Safety Town.
Tonight's spotlight is shining on a great community partnership between Lakota, the Westchester Police Department, and Butler County Sheriff's Office. This is the fourth year that Lakota's doors have been opened to help teach incoming kindergarteners about safety. This summer, Freedom Elementary School is the home for Lakota Safety Village, a week-long program where students learn important safety lessons. Tonight, Freedom's SRO, School Resource Officer, Officer Gabe Stanton is here to share more about the program with you. Joining Officer Stanton are two Safety Village graduates, Brooks and Willow Viola. An incoming kindergartner, Willow completed the program this month, while Brooks, a rising first grader, completed it last summer.
Thank you for having us. I'm Officer Gabe. I work for Westchester Police Department and this is my second year running Safety Village. I've been doing this for two years. Of the four years we've had it, it was started by Officer Gary Gabbert and Deputy Amanda Dixon. We teach multiple different topics, so we cover fire safety, stranger danger, roadway safety, crosswalks. We talk about what to do at schools. We cover Alice lockdown drills, as well as fire drills and tornado drills, so they have a better understanding when they start school. And then we get to drive pedal cars every day, so they get to drive and then they get to tell mom and dad how to drive as well, which is really good for the parents. This is a completely free program. Right now, we are funded through a charity called Three Little Halos. They, it is a set of grandparents that have raised money after they lost three of their grandkids in a fire in Westchester back in 2008. So they, they raised this to start a program that we could easily teach children about fire safety and other safety topics to keep them safe in our community. I will have the kids come up now and tell you kind of what their favorite part was and what their favorite thing they learned during their week with us. All right. Tell them what your favorite part of Safety Village is.
My favorite part of Safety Village is the pedal cars.
Okay. And then tell them what was the favorite thing you learned?
My favorite thing that I learned was road safety.
Like what? Like stop signs?
Stop signs.
How long do you stop at a stop sign?
Three seconds.
Stop at a stop sign for three seconds. Good job. Your sister step up? Willow, what was your favorite part of Safety Village?
The pedal cars.
The pedal cars. And what was your favorite thing you learned at Safety Village?
Stranger danger and fire safety.
Stranger and fire safety. Thank you. Good job. All right. We will pass it back to you guys for any questions or comments.
Christina, anything or anyone on this side?
Thank you so much for your presentation and Officer Gabe, thank you for the time and effort that you put into running this. I can tell based on, on our two friends that shared that this is a very instrumental program for them. And I don't know, I think I should try out the pedal cars.
They're pretty fun. I'm not going to lie.
I guess so. Thank you for what you're doing for our community. I appreciate it. And great job.
I just want to say thank you as well. I'm scared to do the pedal cars because I'm just scared of what my driving would look like. But actually, this is fantastic because I have heard all about Safety Town for years now and how much fun it is and how great it is. So to hear from the kids just how much fun they were and then all the things that they learned within it. So I was aware of the traffic, but not the stranger danger and fire safety. So it's a great service and really grateful to my, the Three Little Halos for providing this funding because the program has such great renown across the district. So thank you.
Thank you. Officer Dave, thank you so much for what you do to make us feel safe. And it's also great that our kids are getting to understand the importance of safety. Everybody should be, should be involved in safety and security, so we really, really appreciate that. The kids, can one of them come for a question? Okay. I have a, no, I have a question for you.
He has a question. Look right here.
This way. Okay. When you drove the safety car, did you get the light, traffic light? And if it stayed red, what do you do?
Stop.
When, when it's green, what do you do?
Go.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Just want to check, okay? Thank you so much.
Just standing right there.
Yes, I will echo everyone's thank you for the program and for Westchester Police partnering with Three Little Halos to put this program on for the incoming kindergarteners, because I do think it's really beneficial. And I'm going to ask our two students, do you feel like you're more prepared now to start school in the fall since you went to Safety Village?
Yes.
All right. Good job, guys. Go ahead, Adam.
Gabe, how many people attend Safety Village, or Safety Town each year?
So currently, we have 320 registered, which is the max we can see.
That's a lot of pedal cars.
Yeah. We're fully maxed out this summer. Our goal is to expand. I think if we can expand next summer, we can maybe see 480 kids, which would be really good. So that's our goal. We'll try and get there. But right now, we're eight weeks and we run two sessions a day, so maxed out at 320 kids and we still have families emailing and trying to register, so it's really good.
Thank you.
Thank you both for coming in. You did a wonderful job and I really like those T-shirts.
So my question for you is, have you been sharing some things that you learned with mom?
Yes.
How's that going?
Good.
Wonderful. Gabe, thank you for doing this and being a part of it and all that you do all year for our kids, so we appreciate that. I remember when my kids went to Safety Town an eon ago, either I signed up later, we didn't have it because I had to go to Hamilton, so I love that it's now available here, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Are you all willing to come up and take a photo with us? Would you do that with us?
Yes.
Fabulous. Please join us right up front. There you are. I'm sure you're excited. She's supposed to be around. Well, she's watching her dress. I'm not surprised.
Well, the rest of the meeting's going to be hard to top after that, but that was very fun. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
We are going to move to board reports. First, we have Butler Tech and career development. Once again, we talked about the financials of Butler Tech. Everything's going well. We did, are doing some transfers. So many of the same things that Adam will go over tonight for Lakota, we covered for Butler Tech at our meeting. Also, the, the building of the Aviation Center continues to do well, as well as the Megatronics area and the new partnership with Miami. So they actually, we did a, some of the representatives of Butler Tech just went to Washington DC to do some lobbying and they had representatives from Miami Industry and Butler Tech. And they were well received with that partnership of what we can do going into the future. So next, oh, any questions? Hearing none. Community engagement?
So we, the last time we met with community engagement, we again talked about or reiterated that, not that community conversations are not important, but we're going to pause on those. We don't want anybody to think that we've forgotten about those or anything like that, but we're just pausing on those because of our focused work on master facilities. After tonight, hopefully, we will really start to push out and engage our community in that. And again, you'll see some future communications regarding opportunities to support conversations. In fact, finding information about master facilities, whether that's at community spaces or maybe homeowner, homeowners associations. We're working on getting those dates on the calendar so that then we can reach out to folks who might want to volunteer some spaces throughout the community. So we will pause on community conversations as we know them till around probably November, December, and then pick back up on those. The FAQ, we have solidified the FAQ around community engagement around master facilities. We got tons of great questions on our thought exchange that we took in, so that is on the website in case people want to reference that, particularly after tonight's conversation. So again, doing some planning for next year, but really the focus, at least for the first half of the year, will be on that community engagement push around master facilities and making sure that we are just sharing all of the factual information about the potential bond issue that we're voting on tonight.
Great. Yeah. I think that will be less confusing for people to have one focus at a time. Policy committee?
So the, really the only thing is the second reads of the policies that we'll have tonight. And then right now, there's nothing really that we're slated to address, so we're looking to actually cancel the next policy committee meeting. But after that, I'm sure going into the fall, there will be a lot of updates that we'll be having to take a look at, so.
We also are waiting on legislators to finalize some decisions. So as you, if you just recall, just to make sure that it's all in our mind, you know, we did approve our cell phone policy that we collaborated on heavily with the community. There is a possibility that that could likely change, so if that does, we will bring that policy back for a read depending on the state mandate that could perhaps be passed. So we will, again, if, if everything stays as we hope with our collaborative policy, we're in good shape, everything's good to go. If that were to change, we would have to bring that policy back for a read to amend it, as well as the student code of conduct.
So that did make, that did make the budget. So it's just waiting for the governor's signature.
It's just waiting for the governor's signature.
So if he's, when he signs off on that, we will have to?
We will have to shift.
Redo all the hard work we did.
Yes, yes.
Local control. All right. Anything else? Facilities?
We're meeting weekly, as we have been. I think we're going to talk later on about that in detail, about where we've kind of worked through up to this point, but continuing to meet on that basis and we've updated some dates on the website to match the recent discussion that we had in master facilities.
Finance committee?
Finance committee, we met to review student fees. We talked about fiscal year-end and the, the approvals that we'll have for fiscal year-end. I also, I should have noted in the treasurer comments and did not, but the House Bill 96, we're still waiting on emails for what line item vetoes had happened and stuff so that we can analyze that. The last document we had was about 1,177 pages that showed the different changes and so we're waiting to get the finalized so we can really analyze all the different variations that we've seen through this budget cycle. So stay tuned on that. There should be a nice, a nice update coming once we have the final information and we really start pounding into that.
Yes. We, we got better news than we had hoped at this stage, so that was.
For now.
For now. That's true. I guess.
Anxiously waiting.
It's been a bit of a roller coaster. It went down and up and.
With the loops. It's got, that's a roller coaster with the loops.
And no seatbelts.
It's been extraordinarily tricky because, you know, as much as I believe everybody's hopeful that something could make for a long-term plan for everyone within the state, there are so many different things that happen when you pull certain levers on things and that's what's been tricky to really analyze and see what the implications of these would do.
Yeah. And we also talked a bit about school fees and some changes there, which we'll get to later in the agenda as well. Anything else? Questions? Board professional development, anyone have anything they'd like to report? All right. For G, we have committee and community conversation meeting dates, again, available through the link with board docs if anybody would like to reference that. There is an updated calendar with any changes that we.
Can I have a question? Doug mentioned, are you cancel, are we canceling policy?
We are.
Are we canceling community engagement as well?
We are. We're just looking for a new date for that because we had talked about potentially Thursday.
So we won't have it there, but we are going to.
Correct.
And you will notice policy and community engagement are still on the attachment that we have right now, but the notice that I sent out this morning, I did remove facilities for tomorrow morning from that.
So we just need to send out a notice to cancel policy and community engagement?
That's correct. We'll do that. And if we could, if we could get subcommittee, the next one that I had that wasn't dark bold print just yet was on the 8th. I don't know when our next.
The next subcommittee is the 8th and next quorum committee is the 15th.
It is the 8th. Okay. So I'll, I'll put that on this notice as well.
Correct. Let me pull up my dates. Double check that, but I think that's correct.
Yep. So next master facilities.
That's really dark out. Thank you. Thanks, Todd.
Thinking. Hold on, I've got my dates working.
I think because.
In the spotlight over there.
Yes.
The gentleman are in the spotlight.
Whether they want to be or not.
Here we go. Our next meeting is July.
I have July 8th.
July 8th as a subcommittee and the quorum is the 15th. And that 15th is from 7:00 to 9:00.
That's the one, yeah, Doug, Isaac and I will.
Yeah. Julie is absent, Christina is absent. Yep. So that is from 7:00 to 9:00 on July 15th.
Yep. And we have that, well, that one noticed. I just hadn't had the subcommittee notice yet. So I'll attach that on for the.
Cancellation.
Cancellation of policy and community engagement this week. Perfect. Thank you.
So next on our agenda is item six. We have policy here, policy public hearing for the retire rehire of two employees, Scott Kaufman and Eric Baumann. When you do a retire rehire opportunity, there needs to be an opportunity for the public to come and make a statement if they're so inclined. If anyone would like to do that, they may come forward at this time to address the board about the proposed retire rehire of Scott Kaufman and Eric Baumann. And so you can step forward at this time regardless if you've signed up. And then if there's more than one person, we'll take turns with those who are speaking. So is there anyone who would like to address the board retire, regarding the retire rehire process for these gentlemen?
And Ms. Rosskley did confirm that nobody had signed up at the back table.
All right. Seeing no one, we will move on in our agenda. We're moving, I would like a motion to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official per Ohio Revised Code 121.22. Or number two, to consider the purchase of property for public purpose because premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest per Ohio Revised Code 121.22. And number three, for the sale of property at competitive bidding because premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest, also per Ohio Revised Code 121.22. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion prior to vote? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes. All right. So we will be taking action when we come out of executive session. We never know quite how long this is going to take, so I apologize. We anticipate it will be under an hour and we will get back to you as soon as we're capable. I know. I just jinxed us, but.[1061.08]
When you do a retire rehire opportunity, there needs to be an opportunity for the public to come and make a statement if they're so inclined. If anyone would like to do that, they may come forward at this time to address the board about the proposed retire rehire of Scott Kaufman and Eric Baumann. And so you can step forward at this time regardless if you signed up. And then if there is more than one person, we'll take turns with those who are speaking. So is there anyone who would like to address the board regarding the retire rehire process for these gentlemen?
And Mr. Oskley did confirm that nobody had signed up at the back table.
All right. Seeing no one, we will move on in our agenda. We're moving, I would like a motion to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official per Ohio Revised Code 121.22. Or number two, to consider the purchase of property for public purpose because premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest per Ohio Revised Code 121.22. And number three, for the sale of property at competitive bidding because premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest also per Ohio Revised Code 121.22. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion prior to vote? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. De?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes. All right, so we will be taking action when we come out of executive session. We never know quite how long this is going to take, so I apologize. We anticipate it will be under an hour and we will get back to you as soon as we are capable. I know, I just jinxed us.
All right, I'd like to pull us out of, oh, are we ready? I'm sorry. I'd like to pull us out of executive session and now we'll move to administrative reports. Adam, if you'd like to start the overview of the resolution to proceed.
Ooh, hold on one second. I have to hit save. Okay, so I'm going to kick this over to Dr. Whitley for the start out and then I'll pick up when she leaves off.
So, um, tonight's focus, um, if you remember the last board meeting we had, we had, um, a resolution of necessity, meaning that we were just considering, like, just to bring into the conversation, do we want to potentially put on a bond issue for November? This one is a resolution, or what we're, what we're talking about tonight is the resolution to proceed. So not only have we pondered it and we've, uh, figured out it is, is of necessity, which we passed, but now it is, do we want to move forward? Um, so the Board of Education determines that per, to proceed with a levy. So this is the vote to put it on the ballot, um, in November. That is what this vote means. It requires four votes, um, to pass this resolution. And I think the important thing about this resolution particularly is that this is not a reflection of what you as a board member necessarily, or how you will vote in November, um, but it's giving the community the ability to vote on the issue of a bond issue and if they want to support. So again, the whole point of this resolution is to say, we're going to put it on the ballot to give our community the opportunity to either support or not support that, not our individual viewpoints as individual board members of what that might look like. So I just wanted to provide that clarity. It is to put it on the ballot to let our community speak about whether they support the bond issue that we need to, um, build buildings. So, why should we consider this? Um, and I think the biggest piece is, we do not have a general fund that we can just cash flow out to build a master facilities plan, right? Uh, most school districts do not, right? Because it normally comes with a hefty, uh, hefty amount. And so a bond issue is needed to pay for the master facilities plan, um, that would be needed to build the building configuration that we have discussed. And what it will allow us or offer us is first, it's going to increase the spaces that we have available, not only for our students, but potentially for our community. It's going to enhance programming, whether that be actual, uh, programming, curricular opportunities, but also space for our Lakota students. And again, making it as we streamline buildings and consolidate buildings, it allows us to run a more fiscally responsible, uh, model because of just savings of operations. Um, and Adam will talk about this in, in detail, but really the, the key piece here, um, and again, Adam will speak to, to the millage, but really the point of the resolution is to understand how much money is needed for the bond issue to do the construction. That is that, um, five hundred and six million that you see there. Um, but then also in addition to that, part of the, uh, OFCC, uh, partnership re- requires you to have a point five mil in a permanent improvement. And so because of our adjustment of millage of where we are, we do need to have a point nine five mil for just permanent improvement. So we have the bond issue itself, which is the actual construction, and we will have a permanent improvement, uh, millage that will complement that as part of the requirements of the OFCC. And Adam will talk about that in detail, about what that will actually look like as far as ballot calculations and then proposed max, uh, millage to be collected. But that is the total figure there that you see in green, um, but then don't forget that there will be that plus point nine five PI funding. Um, the biggest, uh, again, part of the, the biggest programming changes is consolidation of buildings, not only for fiscal responsibility, but it allows us to have different grade bands. So we would have, uh, pre-K, then we would have K five, which would have some new builds in there as well as some decommissioning. We would have six through eight, so our junior highs would change grade configuration. And then the freshman buildings would be brought into the main campus, so we would have a more, um, I want to say, natural high school campus of freshmen through sophomores rather than the freshman buildings being separated. Um, what this allows us to do then is to have fewer building transitions, which is going to report, um, instability and academic continuity. We did, I did hear a lot about this in the listening sessions. People love our buildings, but they feel like sometimes because of the number of transitions that we have, that there's a lot of new and a lot of learning over. And so this will reduce those building transitions. Again, it's going to have us allow, uh, more classroom space and flexibility to adjust those class sizes. Again, if you remember in our listening sessions, particularly in K six, class size was a high topic, um, a very prominent topic from, um, our, uh, our K six parents. And so even just the ability to move sixth grade into the junior high will give us a little bit of lift right off the bat. But then as we get more classroom spaces, we can continue to bring that class size down. Um, and then again, from a more programming piece, um, offering, moving to that middle school model will allow more opportunities for electives earlier so that we can build into that high school, uh, pathway or high school opportunities. And last but not least, dedicated rooms for intervention, small group work, enrichment, et cetera. And I know that might sound small, but that is huge because right now we have a lot of interventions. We have a lot of special, we have interventions happening in hallways. We have interventions happening in, you know, closets that have been converted to be usable. And then we have a lot of specials that are on a cart or being traveling in multi-use purposes. And so having those dedicated spaces so that we can really intervene in our MTSS model, um, or in our gifted model or ELL model, whatever it may be, would really be a great opportunity not only for our staff but our students.
Okay, so I promised Ms. Casper that I would make this simple to understand, so here we go. So, we're going to start with talking about the millage collection. So, this is the same equation that we've had put in place for the last thousand years. I'm joking about that, I don't know how long. But, uh, we take the valuation as the county auditor will do an appraised value. From there, thirty-five percent of that becomes your taxed value. So for every one mil, you would have thirty-five dollars per one hundred thousand of appraised value. That's how the calculation works. Uh, the other side of this will show the effect of House Bill nine twenty. So, the snapshot of the entire district was made up of one house. So if it was made up of one home and that home was worth a hundred thousand dollars and one mil was the collection, it would pay thirty-five. If the future value of this became a million dollar home and it was still the only home in the district, it would still collect thirty-five dollars. It would now, the millage rollback would go to point one. So, that's a very high level overarching how this works on the millage collection. Because we're juggling a couple of different concepts on this topic. Okay, so current millage collection. What you're going to see is, is this two thousand twenty-five, you're going to go, well, it says two point two eight, but that's a bit lower than the other ones. That's because we actually collected a little under. They tried to establish this so that we would be able to maintain the same even after that large, uh, reappraisal update that we went through. So, next year, that's actually popping up just a little bit from two point one two, up to two point two eight. So, that's where that'll stay. So two point two eight is kind of our magic number that we're working with. So now when we go to this next chart, there's a new money millage analysis at the top. The next piece right below that, I'm highlighting it on my screen, but it's not highlighting up there, the requested ballot millage calculation. So, this is where we're working through a couple of different concepts. For the ballot millage, they have to put on the total collection period. That would look like four point nine nine. So this ballot language is going to say four point nine nine for bond, point nine five for PI. The point nine five for PI will always maintain what it is. So, if you were to look at this, you would see that it appears that the annual cost between the bond and the PI, you're looking at two hundred and eight dollars per one hundred thousand per year. That's, I would consider very high. You know, that seems like a lot. So now we're going to drop down to the next part, which is how this future calculation's actually going to blend in as we have millage drops. So, as you can see, we're having a little bit come off in two thousand twenty-eight. That was just a little touch of it that's phasing out. We're going to backfill a bit of that. And then as the rest of this falls off, as we had structured, that's when it's going to prop up to the three point nine nine collection in calendar year twenty-nine. So, you're really not going to see a major change to this ballot issue until we hit calendar year twenty-nine several years down the road. You would see the point nine five, that's for the PI side, but the actual big chunk is coming on, on down with the millage drop. So now, this is how this is being illustrated. You see the current bond millage collection is two point two eight. The proposed increase is three point nine nine. That's what the, the new bond would look like for the five hundred and six. However, we're having that two point eight, two point two eight drop. So the net increase for the bond collection is actually from tax year twenty-six, it's only a one point seven one. And then the point nine five for the PI for a total of two point six six, which would equate to ninety-three dollars and ten cents per one hundred thousand per year. How am I doing? Okay. Now, you're going to also see on this, we have a resolution of intent. What the resolution of intent's doing is actually trying to capture this picture for everyone. This is where we're, we're talking about the board has to take action on four point nine nine mils. That's ballot language. Now, due to the debt planning and the millage expiring, this is where this resolution is a promise to the community not to collect more than two point six six at any time of this ballot issue over the thirty-seven years. Now, to do this, we have to base it on some assumptions. That's based on today's interest rate that we're looking at. It's based on a thirty-seven year maturity. That's based on our current Moody's and S and P rating, which is a double A one or a double A plus, as well as today's tax valuation, which is reflected on this as five billion, two hundred forty-four million, seven hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars total. That's class one, class two, and public utility property. Now, this is the same chart, however, it's showing collection aligned to the resolution of intent. So this is where we're actually able to show, how could this ninety-three point one from today's collection actually make sense? And that's where you'll see, I'm showing this in the, uh, twenty twenty-nine millage collection. That's where the two point two eight falls off. where the 2.28 falls off, the 3.99's up, the .95, and the .95, as well as it'll, it'll base on the amortization schedules, that'll continue rolling back as our values grow, for the total of 2.66. 2.66 mils, which would actually be $93.10 per 100,000 per year. So the ballot language is, is a hurdle we're going to have to be jumping on this. This is a big exercise in timing and a big exercise in what we're actually going to do, which is why we wanted the resolution of intent, to say, this is the board's promise. We're not going, you know, there is no bait and switch here, this is what we're doing. Now... Did that go to the next one? Okay. So now you're gonna see, this final chart is showing the collection aligned to the May 25 forecast. This May 25 forecast is where a lot of roads are coming together. We really have a critical timing of getting phase one, that I keep calling it phase one, I don't know what the architects are gonna call it, but that is six through 12 in new facilities, to start fiscal year '29 or the 2028, '29 school year. In order to get some operational savings, to help with the finance side, as well as do some programming enhancements over on the superintendent's side of the academics, by doing that, if we didn't do this, or if we missed the timing of fiscal '29, with the next final phase being done in fiscal '30, if we miss this, that puts us in risk of having to do an operating levy. That's what we're trying to avoid. So what this chart's reflecting is if we did the forecasted operating levy, which is 3.4 mils, now, that's only operating, we've gotta do something with these facilities that we're not doing anything at all with. That's also assuming another two mils, which, that's based around what we had before. That would show that overall, if we went with the forecasted plan, that would cost our community .46 mils more than the new facility method. So, that's one of the, to me, that's one of the big values in this on the finance side, is this is a way that we would be able to not collect any more from the taxpayers in the Lakota community than what we absolutely needed.
And just to clarify, that's an either or, you're saying? You're not gonna do this?
That is the plan. That is the true plan. And I, and I can say on the record, that once this plan would be approved at the ballot, the forecast will look different. It'll have to. But, but we can't forecast with assumptions that we don't have approved, because we can't fund this on our own. If we could fund it on our own, we wouldn't need to do that. I would be able to forecast that much differently. So, the look of that, that's where overall, you're gonna see those numbers kind of toward the upper midsection. Current plan, 2.66, the $93.10, where the forecasted plan, that, that captures that rollback of the 2.28, of course, that's 3.12, or $109.20 per 100,000 per year. So, that's the impact of the forecasted versus the current master facility plan. It, it, it really is, it's coming down to a more operationally efficient footprint, or support what we currently have today. So, that's where we're at. So timeline, we have a resolution of intent, that's the first piece, then we have the resolution to proceed, that's today at this meeting, then we would submit the resolution to proceed with all the other documentation to the Board of Elections. I will deliver that to them, if this is approved, I'll deliver that tomorrow. And then, on November 4th, '25, we would have the vote, and then phase one, assuming this passed. Phase one would come in to be operational at the '28, '29 school year, and I put the note in there, avoid forecasted operational NPI levy, that would be in November of 2028. And then phase two, to make sure that our pre-K through five buildings would be operational by the fiscal year '30 or '29, '30 school year. I feel like I said a lot.
You did a great job.
Yeah.
I think this last slide, right before the questions, is really helpful in pulling it all together.
Questions? For either or both of us?
Anyone?
So...
Say anything.
Go ahead. Does anyone have any questions at this time before?
Any questions before we go to the next section?
So on the programming side, something that's, two questions, statements, I guess. On the programming side, something you said at our last work session was very enlightening to me about what happens with the class sizes and kindergarten. I mean...
So if, you know, if we are not able to kind of go forward with this plan, we're out of space in K-6. Seven through 12 is a little bit different scenario, because you have periods and kids are distributed differently. But when you start looking at K-6, without any more room in the end, we're gonna have to really start thinking creatively about how we get spaces to not have class sizes continue to creep up to 30. Right, right now we're at 27, that's our administrative guidelines. So it comes down to either that class size would increase to a number that, from an educator's standpoint, I do not feel is research-based or successful, or you have to start looking at how do we get classroom spaces back. One way, or a couple ways that, that just come to mind, are you start taking spaces like teacher workrooms, or lunchroom spaces that provide people natural breaks in the day. So that's one potential avenue. Another potential avenue would be that this district would not maybe have all-day kindergarten, but would only have half-day kindergarten. Again, from an educational standpoint, I don't think any of us would say that that is educationally sound. We need kids in all-day kindergarten to make sure that they're academically ready for school, and for first grade. But I say that just to understand, like, when you don't have any other room, your options are limited of what you have to look at. And we have a lot of whole-day kindergarten rooms that would have to at least be explored to keep that class size number more manageable. Again, nobody wants either of those things, but if we have an issue that were to be unsuccessful, we're kind of strapped about what that looks like. Also, you know, we've talked about strategic planning. When you don't have buildings to accommodate the needs of your children, strategic planning looks very, very different in the fall than what it would look like when we have buildings that more complement the learning that we want to see and have our students experience. That strategic plan can look different in its scope and in its depth. So again, nobody wants to be there, but I think we all have to be at least considering all of the options of if we, if we weren't successful, what would that look like as far as opportunities for our children?
Because we're at a point now that in some of our buildings in K-6, even if you wanted to hire a teacher, we don't have a classroom.
Absolutely. Like, and I've said this openly to, to parents, listening sessions, you as a board, you know, I'm not accustomed to class sizes of 27. That number shouldn't be more like 23 and 24. That is the number that I hope for we, for us to be able to get at. That is the staffing model that we're continuing to look at. The problem is, there's nowhere to put them. If I wanted to say, I want nine other K-6 teachers, or four, there's, there's not room, there are literally buildings where we had to talk about sectioning, it's like, you can't offer another section there. There is literally no classroom to be taken that would accommodate children. And so we're just kind of stuck with the configuration that we have, and that's what the master facilities would provide us, is more opportunities, not only for class size, but programming and possibilities for our students. Yeah.
Okay. I think, with that being said, what if the bond levy did not pass? What other option of funding project? What other option do we have to fund the project?
What do we have to fund the project?
Yeah. What other option?
We, so at that point, we would have to talk about, we would, we want to go to the ballot again, you know, an interim of time, whether that be May, the next November, we would have to talk about, and would you go in the very same capacity, or would you look at some different iteration of the master facilities plan for, for it to be maybe a different outcome?
And the, and the more times we go on the ballot, then you're pushed up against that 2029, where now we're asking for a bond issue and have to do operating, because we don't have anywhere to go with these students.
Our current five-year forecast reflects that we would be asking for an operating levy in 2029. So again, this would get us in the right position, where we would then be able to remove that from the forecast, but that's the only way to say solvent as a district.
Yeah, it's also, the, the footprint that we're looking into on the master facility, not only would it have less transitions, but it also would provide us the ability to be able to staff much more consistency, consistently, for all of our students, because, you know, when you have these numbers we're trying to manage within of, of class sizes, when you have it spread out so much, that it would make it a little bit easier to make sure that every student's kind of getting a similar model.
And Adam, with participating with the state and getting additional funding and credits back for the investment that we're making of 32% right now, if we weren't to begin this project, then we no longer are able to lock in that percentage, and we don't know what that may look like in future budgets.
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. This is part of locking that in, so that the state can give us the 32% when our number is called, which they usually say will be somewhere between eight to 10 years, which by the time we get done building these buildings, you look at today, we're just wrapping up fiscal '25, and we're looking at the final phase being 30, you know, right in that range. So, the problem, I believe, that we're running into of this really interesting crossroads is it's becoming tricky to say that we're being fiscally responsible within this model. Doesn't mean it's a bad model. The way we're currently doing it, it's just, it's not as efficient to operate financially as what the other would, and the delivery of programming.
And I think it's gonna take a lot of the educating piece of that, it's not, the ballot's gonna say X amount of mils, but it's really, we're not gonna be collecting.
Yeah, the ballot's going to look like $208.
And it's only gonna be nine, yeah, that's, it's gonna be an education piece, yeah.
And it's going to be 93.10 by '29. Not '26, not '27, not '28, but in '29's when we would hit that 93.10 from where we're currently at.
But it would never be the 2.60.
Greater than. Never greater than.
So even between now and then, it's still not going to be more than that.
That's correct.
That's what the resolution is.
Another thing, the, as mentioned, OFCC requires .5, half mil, for one of their projects. We're asking for a .95. The reason why the .95 is coming in, because, you know, well, you only need .5, so why are we talking about .95? When we initially had this put in, it's really went toward technology, half of this, the other half had went towards some security upgrades, and now it's a lot of pavement. We're only collecting 1.09 from the initial two mils that we put in. So this would bring us back up to 1.5 essentially on that, and then the other .5 would go toward the project over the 37 years.
And can you clarify on what permanent improvement dollars are allowed to be spent on?
Only things that last more than five years, not less than five years.
Any other questions or points of clarification?
It's definitely a hard, it's going to be a communication, valid issue. That's going to be critical.
And nobody, I don't think any of us sitting up here like having to ask for this, but we also value the education that our students deserve. And putting 30 kids in a classroom and having nowhere else to go with them, it's not the best use financially or educationally for our students.
And should you run into the questions out in the community, this is the same ratio, whether it be class one, class two. You know, that's, that's what this is. It's for every $100,000, we're looking at, ballot would read 208, but the actual, when it fully came on, would be $93.10 per 100,000 of appraised value, that then, the way the ratios go down.
All right. Anything else?
An appraised value does not mean what your realtor appraised it at. It means what the county auditor appraises it at.
All right.
Other questions?
All right. Hearing none, we'll move to board action items, and I'm going to take these separately for 9A. We have the resolution, Adam went over this in Slide 12, but I think I will just go ahead and read it just for clarity. Resolution of intent to proceed with placing the question, question of issuing the bond and the levy on the ballot for November 4th, 2025. In the event that the bonds and levies are approved by the electors of the school district, at such election, the board shall take all action within its power and ability to keep the millage collected, to pay annual debt charges on the bonds and for the levy at or below the aggregate total of 2.66 mils, based on and only if the following factors are met. The interest rate on the bond does not exceed 4.8%. The maximum maturity of the bond is 37 years. The tax valuation of the school district does not decline below the school district's 2026 collection year tax valuation of $5,244,719,670. And the school district maintains a bond rating of AA1 for Moody Investors Service, AA+ from S&amp;P Global Ratings. Do I have a motion for this resolution?
Before we vote, can I make a statement? Or is after?
Can I first please do a motion, and a second, and then we can have discussion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
No discussion?
Okay. I want to make a statement, because when we started this facility, I had a lot of energy, and a lot of contribution, and I, and have been doing all my best to make sure that we get everything done. But as time went on, we got to a point, I had a concern. And that concern is not only from me, but it's also expressed from a lot of community members that have been contacting me about this facility. This is not a reflection of how I'm gonna vote in November, neither is it gonna be how I want it to end in November, but it's just a concern that I have to express. So, my concern is not based on the need, need for the building improvements, or housing for the potential future growth of the school district. Rather, it is based on what I've seen my board, which include me as well, recently do concerning other issues. We had a concern, I mean, we had a concern one time, when the union contacted us, did a presentation, and we decided we're gonna bring our, our legislators for explanation. And when the legislators came, they gave us all that we needed. We understand too that e-voucher is bipartisan. It's something that is coming from the community. We chose to vote in favor of joining the union to fight the legislators. That was a big concern for me. I know it passed, I voted against it, it passed, but it's a huge concern for me. For me, at this point, I believe it is disingenuous for me to go back to the same community that I, I turn against, ask them for bond levy, to build facilities for the same students that I believe they don't have a choice to make their decision regarding where they need to take their kids to. So that is a huge concern for me, and because of that, that is gonna reflect my vote tonight. Like I said before, it has nothing to do with whether this levy is gonna pass or not, and that does not reflect how I'm gonna vote in November, but this is my concern, and I want to express it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to share any thoughts? Questions? All right. Hearing none, Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. D?
No.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Item 9B, we have a resolution to proceed with an issue of bonds and levy of an additional tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation, and certifying the same to the Board of Elections. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. D?
No.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
We now are moving to item 10A, Treasures Fiscal Year in Presentation. Mr. Zink had a lot of heavy lifting for this meeting.
All right. Can't promise this one's gonna be like Kindergartner.
That's okay, I'm good with this one.
Make it easy. Yeah, I'll make it quick. I tried to keep this one short. We spent a lot of time on the bond side. Okay, so here we are, fiscal year end again. Our general fund, total revenue was two-hundred-and-nineteen-point-six million, ended up one-point-two million more than, or one-point-two percent over projected. Total expenditures ended up at two-hundred-seventy-two-point-four million, at point-nine percent more than projected, with the ending cash balance totaling out to sixty-three-point-five million, or point-one percent more than projected. It was actually about sixty-six thousand dollars. What we, what we've got in place after this year is we've got in place some reserve accounts that will help us to maintain stability over the long period of time. So this is a snapshot of all of our appropriations. This is year-end budget. As you see, the fiscal twenty-five expenditures, that is actual. This is where we actually ended up, all funds, all in. Then at the right-hand side, you will see the fiscal twenty-six temporary appropriations, the fiscal twenty-six that we'll be voting on as well, temporary appropriations for the general fund and the debts aligned to the general fund, that is tied to the May submission of the five-year forecast. So that's, that's the way we've aligned that. Most other pieces of this come from if we've got the information on our federal taxes there, or federal grants. That has been an interesting challenge all day today. Mr. Oskley spent a ton of time with Dr. Whitley on that, making sure that we could get in. They have a lot of disruptions there at the moment. So snapshot fiscal twenty-six, that does tie back to what we had forecasted in the May five-year forecast. So fiscal year end steps that we have is we'll finalize the, we finalized the appropriations. Today is the last year, day of the fiscal year. So we finalized that. All budget has been set to actual for fiscal twenty-five. We will, and that is fund object level, keep that in mind. We'll have these up for approval, then we approve temporary appropriations for fiscal twenty-six. We have to have temporary appropriations approved in order to release checks. We can't, we cannot physically release a check without a budget in place, so if we voted that down and we waited till the twenty-first, the finance department would be able to take a long vacation. Then we also have fund-to-fund transfers and advances. A lot of those would pertain to what we have, twenty-five percent for our, for our extracurricular, twenty-five percent went toward the parents, with the district covering seventy-five percent. We really pushed all expenditures over into those actual three-hundred or two-hundred accounts last year. So you'll see things on the transfers for club cards. We actually put another reserve account in when the revenues come in a bit higher for copiers. These are part of our plans that we've put in place to establish some reserve accounts for pieces of currently general-funded expenditures. So these are things that we can, instead of leasing like copiers, for example, this is actually going to be our last phase. Instead of leasing those and paying them out of the general fund, we'll make a purchase and then if they last longer, this is based on a five-year, which is what most terms of the copier leases would be. If you do five-year purchase versus a five-year lease, it's typically going to result in a savings, but then any year after that, it results in a tremendous savings. So that's a way that we're putting this in place. We also have things like capital for athletic, capital for band instruments. We've had several different pieces that we've put in for those transfers and advances. The advances, we didn't have forecasted, but the advances have come in. That is for the timing pieces of student fees that weren't captured by the district waive. District waiver is, there's many ways per policy that a student can qualify for district waiver. That is part of the transfer, but any of those that have timing where they just haven't paid the bill yet, then that's going to be captured with the advance. So we have that. Then we will file the documents with the county auditor. We'll do that again tomorrow, and then we send the cash file over to the auditor of state. We'll send that over and then begin to begin the audit process for the year. So challenges that we have in fiscal twenty-five, state funding for House Bill ninety-six, I have still looked in my email, still does not say what we have gotten approved through the governor, which tells me that we have till midnight tonight to get that approved. There will be several different changes in that. One change that we already know is coming is the forecast for fiscal twenty-six will have to be approved by October fifteenth this year. Then they're going to have it approved by the end of August and the end of February. So that's a bit of a shift from where we've currently been with taking it from the end of October to the end of November, and we've had it at the end of May since I've been-
Three times now, instead of two?
No, not three times. It will only be approved by the end of August, once we get past twenty-six. So in twenty-six, you'll see a approval by October fifteenth, and then you'll see an approval by the end of February. Fiscal twenty-seven, it'll have to be approved by the last day of August and by the last day of February. So that'll, it's still two approvals, but that'll make it a little challenging with the timing because our first submission, we typically don't have a real estate settlements by then for the second half, where we lock in where we're actually at for the total year. Our real estate pays first half, second half straddles the fiscal year because we get the first one typically in April, March, and then we'll get the other one in September. So we would have to have that next year by then, the following year, fiscal twenty-seven by then. And what else for me makes this kind of challenging is we don't have our first pay of the sixteen-hundred people new contract till August fifth, or September fifth, sorry. So that's going to make it just a little bit challenging for getting that off and getting the severances, so, but we'll get there. So we still have strong reserves. Our reserves, our cash reserves, we're going to need to take this back to policy and rework this a bit because our cash reserves would look like we're below policy. However, with the establishment of these reserve accounts, it's a different look now. So we're going to want to work through that. We're currently ending with eighty-six days cash, but again, we have these reserves. Reserve accounts, initial investment, that was in May, was thirty-five-point-seven million. We've had another add to that with the copiers at the five-hundred thousand. Transportation, interesting enough, we just had, we had some, some assumptions based on where we hoped that that would be. Our first blush at transportation come back at about nineteen million versus the roughly like thirteen million that I was anticipating. Biggest piece of that was we have a hundred-and-seventy-three buses per their spreadsheet that are within five years old. So whatever in this world happened to the rotation, we have a meeting tomorrow with them over team so that we can try to figure out how that could have happened. But that may change timing. We're still going to be able to stick to our plans of yearly transfers to that as we had forecasted as well. Fiscal year twenty-five in a nutshell. Any questions, any comments?
I just have one question. On slide three, is that the calculator you used to do all of this? The graphic that you have in there?
I'd have to, let me go back to look. Not exactly. No, that is not exact-
Just, just curious.
That is not the calculator that I had used. I use a spreadsheet. If I don't have a spreadsheet, I don't know what to do.
I've never seen you not have a spreadsheet.
Yeah, I just have that spreadsheet.
Thank you, sir.
It'd probably take me a little training to remember, like, the people that use the ten key, I'm not one of them. I'm not one of the adding machine people.
Really?
I'm not that type of accountant, I'm a spreadsheet.
We are very different people, you and I.
Uh-huh. I'm a different breed.
Again, like this and the other presentation, I appreciate so much that you are trying to work very carefully to make sure we have the resources aligned to the opportunities and that we're doing the best to try to balance our communities' needs from an educational standpoint with our communities' financial needs. And I think when we see all the detail, not only in the facility plan, but in this plan, we appreciate you trying to think out of the box of how might we balance all those interests in the very best way that we can. So I think you've gotten creative in a positive way to make the best choices, so thank you.
Thank you.
I think you did a great job in both presentations of making it understandable to us and the community and all those who have questions, so thank you for taking the time to really break that down and make that make sense.
Thank you.
And thank your staff. We know you don't do this in isolation.
Yeah.
So, thank you to them as well.
Yeah, the-
You owe them donuts tomorrow.
Yeah, more than that, and I'll get there at the end of my final closing comments, but Mr. Oskley has been a complete superstar through this process.
He gets his own dozen.
Yeah, he will, he will. I might even, I might even take him to lunch special somewhere.
Awesome. He takes a village, right?
But it is, I, I, I have to say, after going through this presentation, it has been a little disheartening to see all of the legislative changes. I know the reason, I know the why, I know what everybody's trying to do, but it is, we have a plan. We really have a plan, and we're really trying to make the plan work. And some of these things, I look at it and I'm going, oh, some of these things that we did two years ago now are potentially not going to be part of the plan.
Yeah, and I don't think that the legislators have done us any favors by mandating so much, you know, they say local control, except then they say, no, local control, but do this. They, they really haven't done education. They've done a disservice to education. Every person that voted on that House Bill ninety-six has done a disservice, in my opinion, to education. And I understand there's one pot of money, and I understand that there are needs in the state that everyone wants the one pot of money, but it seems like there's a lot of unnecessary things that have been done to public education to make it even harder to educate, that ninety-five percent of students in the state of Ohio is it?
Coming from, coming from two school districts that were both twenty-mil floor and the second one being twenty-mil floor and one percent traditional income tax, I mean, that was like three legs of the funding stool. With us not have been a twenty-mil floor district, a lot of these legislations are really geared to relief of some of those, but we're not one of those. And that's one of the things that's a bit frustrating, is, you know, it's kind of the, we're getting the full paintbrush of this, so. But we'll keep, the show must go on. We'll keep figuring it out, and we'll keep planning, and we'll continue to deliver.
Yeah. I also think because of the complexity of the different funding mechanisms, that a lot of times there are unintended consequences with a particular action that are not necessarily foreseen when that seems like a good idea in isolation. Once you look at it in the aggregate, you're like, ooh, perhaps that's not going to have the outcome I intended, and it could, yeah, have very different consequences, and trying to do them all simultaneously can be, I don't think people fully realize the impact.
I want to say something. My personal opinion, observation, actually, in public education, like you said, interference, I would believe that if public education would stay away from a lot of other areas that we have dabbled into in the past, the legislators are going to leave us alone. Because we are in education, but we put a lot of attention on, too much on social issues, and those things are, it doesn't, it wasn't like that in the past, am I right? I know, I just came on board in twenty-twenty-
The world is different now, and we need to prepare our students for the world. We don't need to just teach, I mean, in my opinion, just my opinion, that we don't need to focus on just teaching them how to read, just teaching them how to write. We want them to be good community members when they leave us. We want them to be able to go out into the world and be able to handle everything that's going to be thrown at them. So I think sometimes when we talk about not teaching social justice or SEL and you just kind of want to be in isolation, I think we do a disservice to our students that way because we're not really preparing them for their full future.
I agree with that, but the thing here is you're preparing the kids for the future, but you're taking also the responsibility of the parents. Because you're, to a point that where the education system is even taking the kids away from the parents. That's why legislation is saying, you know what, we have to look into this and make sure we're smoothing things out. So it's a lesson that public education has to learn, and I know it's going to take time to get there.
I, I think that we might have to agree to disagree, because what you've just said is, what the legislature is doing is they're now being the parent. They're now telling us what we should tell, so, I mean, I think it's a double-edged sword. I just think we have different views on it, good or bad. I mean, we both have our opinions and I, you know, but we can talk about it without yelling.
Yeah, I know, and that's why we're talking, right?
Without yelling at each other.
Yeah. We share opinions to be able to understand, yeah? I disagree, but maybe for next time, debate, not today.
So, any other thoughts, anyone else would like to share, questions for Adam before we move into approvals? Adam, is there anything you'd like me to separate out? Are you, are you good doing all of it?
No, you can do, yeah, please, please do them all together.
Okay, Adam doesn't have the bandwidth.
My, my voice is.
We're moving to Treasurers' Recommendations, eleven A through F. Do I have a motion for approval of Board Minutes' financial reports, final appropriations, temporary appropriations, fund-to-fund transfers, and continuing our work with Ohio Checkbook?
So moved.
We'll do Isaac, will you second? Any further discussion?
I will throw out that on the Ohio Checkbook, we've put this in place my first year, and it has been surprising that we haven't had more public record requests that have spawned out of there. So that's been a pleasant surprise. I think that was a fear that we all had at the beginning, was that it would bring a load on, and it really hasn't, so.
All right. Any further discussions or questions? Hearing none, Mr. Zink, please call the roll.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're now moving to Superintendent's Recommendations. Again, Dr. Whitley, given the length, is there, are there any that you'd like me to pull out? Are you comfortable doing these all together?
I'll take them.
All right. We have Superintendent's Recommendations, A through J, Personnel, Field Trips, MOU for the Butler County Sheriff's Office, as well as Westchester Township for the School Resource Officers, approving the school fees for twenty-five, twenty-six, approving changes in lunch prices, resolutions to declare transportation impractical, contract approval, second read of board policy, and approval of donations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just to draw your attention to a couple of things, the MOUs in C and D again are for our SROs. We still continue to have a couple of buildings that share SRO officers, and that is just because they do not have the personnel to be able to staff that, to take those off of kind of like road duty and things to fulfill those. But in our new master facilities plan, if we had, you know, decommissioned buildings and have slightly different number, we would be able to have a one-to-one model, so that is, and I say that because safety was a large narrative around master facilities, so that would be an opportunity there. Additionally, I want to draw your attention to item G. Item G is the resolution, so normally we're bringing the kid, the students' request to about transportation being impractical. This is the resolution declaring us the ability to look at each scenario and make that determination for twenty-five, twenty-six. So this is not an individual entity about it being impractical. This is the resolution to say we can look at those as we have years in the past, and then you'll see a large batch potentially in August and at the end of the year. Contract approval, these are all for our county agreements, so with the consortiums, whether that's Hamilton County, Butler County, Warren County. In the past, I know in the past, we've had a past practice of kind of year-long contracts going on the agenda, but not multi-year. We're going to get in a better practice of using all contracts, just because of transparency. I think that that's a really healthy, steady diet to do, so that's why you're seeing there's those there for the first time. And then the second read policy, just a reminder, this is because of a vacation language change that we needed because we have non-reps that are now not on a two-sixty work calendar. We have a two-oh-five work calendar for a non-rep, and so that language needed to be adjusted, which we talked about last time, but just a reminder.
And then can you specify on school fees, just the highlighter, either you or Mr. Zink?
So, yeah, school fees, a couple of things there. Basically, school fees should be about what a child uses, what they consume, right? So rather than it being a buffet where you pay for kind of the whole experience, a school fee should reflect what you as a student engage with, whether that's in the K-six world or seven-through-twelve world. In the K-six world, we are still going to continue to do kits, so a student will- So, a student will actually pick up a kit that is all packaged and ready for them to go on the first day of school. They will have those. But then in addition to complement that kit, we also have Kleenexes, paper towels, and Clorox wipes, so that families don't go have to go out, go blah, 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 have to go out and purchase those. We wanted to make it a one-stop experience for families, that they have all of their school supplies. The only things that would be on those school supplies list that a family might have to buy on their own would be a backpack, a lunchbox, and earbuds, just because of personal preference on those kind of items. In the 7 through 12 world, again, the supply list will continue to be by classroom or by grade level. Ms. Fuller actually already has those on the website, if you're eager to get back to school shopping early. The other piece as well is, we will not be having club cards for next year, the $100 club card fee that we've experienced. We're going to just evaluate the ongoing use of that, and perhaps just look at club involvement, club activities, how that works with supplementals to maybe have a better long-term plan. So we're going to pause on those for the year.
So, and with some, with the high school, it will be distinct to each individual class?
It will be distinct about the classes that you take, so it will not be a blanket fee, again, not the buffet style. It will be, if I'm in anatomy, I pay an anatomy fee. If I'm in an English 10 class, I pay an English 10 class. And that is not only just for preference, but legal counsel that they needed to be separated by a truant student experience and what they consume, rather than a kind of a blanket price for that could encompass all.
And then just Mr. Zink, to clarify, last year, we had a lot of discussion about who is picking up the charges, if people were using credit cards, or do you want just one-
Yeah, we will still do the same methodology on that through our Pay School platform that we had to switch to. I want to make sure everybody knows that we had to make the switch over to Pay School from Easy Pay because the people at Easy Pay sold the platform to the people at Pay School. But it will still be, if they do an ACH, which is through their account with their check, that'll be waived, it's waived as in the district covers that, and then the rest, if they chose to pay with a credit card due to the credit card fees and everything, then that would just be rolled forward to them. We also, I shared with the board in my update, fee comparison, year over year. It was a little harder to do the high school because we had the supply fee, and now it's per class.
Sorry, is there a flat rate or percentage of, for the credit card?
I'm wanting to say it's a flat 3%. I'm wanting to say, but I would have to verify that.
I believe there was a minimum as well, if I recall.
There's some, yeah, there's some, let me, I can get that information, share that with you. But if, if, I know it has security things, but if a parent chose to use their ACH, then they can make that-
Without any-
They can make that without a charge to the parent. That's correct.
And then our lunch prices have been changed to make that self-sustaining, in an effort to make, continue to make our lunch program self-sustaining.
Yeah, we, we did have several conversations about that. Mr. Hefield and his team did a nice job reviewing the, something's got, something's got to go, but they're going to make small cart changes. There's a, a different meal that they provide that's outside of the standard cost point, and so they're going to make some adjustments there. We've kind of modeled them out, what's kind of like a balance sheet, that they are able to simulate what different prices would be to get rough estimates based on actual staffing and stuff.
Right. Any other further questions or clarifications? Hearing none, Mr. Zink, please call the roll.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
All right, closing comments. I'll start with Mr. D.
Okay. Adam, I know you've done a lot of work in the recent past on your team. Like Ms. Casper said, thank you so much, because you have always been keeping us abreast. Extend that appreciation to your team. Another thing I'm going to say is, I had an opportunity to speak with one parent last week. I think we may need to make our central application easier or maybe more plain, so that some people, parents can understand, because what I was hearing is, is not clear. It's not a clear code on how to get into the system. So, I know, I was able to call you when you were on your vacation, I forgot that you were in Italy, so.
I'm sorry, into what? I didn't hear.
Central.
Oh, central?
Central High School.
Central High School.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the application, how to get in. Yeah, so, I don't know how we can get that information across, but let's make it clearer to parents to understand.
So there's really not an application.
Right.
Really, they go through their building principal, which would then connect them with their counselor, and they would go through the MTSS product, process to look at the data to see if that would be a good fit. So there's technically, it's not like an alternative school of choice form, really. It is a process by where they evaluate each student's scenario through the MTSS process. So I would reach out to the principal directly of the school that they're currently in, and then that's how that process would start.
Okay. Also make an official statement, I love to be on the board. However, I've almost got into my final conclusion of whether I'm going to run or not in the next couple of weeks, I'll be able to do that, but it has to do with my job, the kind of job I have now, and the job assignment that I have, is going to be taking a lot of my attention. You could, you guys could see, recently, I'm not able to attend so many meetings that you all have to have been. You have to adjust. Can you imagine going for a board meeting at 7:00 AM? I know you all did that to accommodate me, and I really, really appreciate that. So, thank you, guys. I don't know, but the way it seems, in the next couple of weeks, I'll be able to conclude, because I'm having some conversations with my employers and my family members to see whether I'll still be back, I mean, run again, and come back or not. But at this time, it seems like unlikely I might not be able to, to run. But I don't want you guys to be surprised. It has nothing to do with any one of you guys. It has to do with my own, you know, personal life, my finances, and I have to make some tough decisions. So, but in case I didn't come back, I'll say it again, I made you guys to start board meeting at 7:00 AM, so I really, really appreciate it. Thank you, guys, for, for accommodating me and helping me make sure that I'm able to participate. So, that's all from me.
Thank you. Mr. Horton?
I'll just add that, that 7:00 AM is not so bad when Mrs. French is bringing us-
Muffins.
Pastries and muffins.
That's right.
Are you bringing some cake sometimes?
I'm going back to work soon. That was a once-in-a-lifetime situation.
That was never communicated to me. I have a certain level of expectation now, so. It, it's interesting, this, in the past like week or two, I've gotten all these questions from people just talking at random things, and they're like, oh, you have a board meeting, but school's out. And, and I think it's really interesting to have this meeting now after those conversations, because so much tonight was very monumental. And outside of some of the decisions we made, just the process of closing the fiscal year and starting the next fiscal year, and the heavy lifting that's done during the summer. And, and I really just want to touch on a theme that I, I think was continually reinforced throughout the evening, is that there is a lot of choices that we as a board, or that our superintendent and treasurer can make to just keep doing the same thing, and all of those result in spending more money and not creating an ideal learning situation for our students. And instead, you know, tonight, we saw active decisions such as making a more complicated message to the electorate on exactly what the, what it is that we're asking for versus what the ballot says. But that choice is to actually save money for our constituents. And so what I just really appreciate is that there's a continual effort to expand programming, make education more optimal, and do it even though it's harder than to just keep pushing the, the can forward down the road. And so, tonight was really, just those two things kind of coincided for me, and I'm really appreciative of all the work that's been going in for the past literally year and a half to, and not just the bond issue, but also the, the work that's been done to kind of get us on good footing from a education standpoint, a curriculum standpoint. We've done so much in the past year and a half to expand curriculum without even what we're talking about, what we're, what we can unlock, unlock with, with the decisions we made tonight. So, really excited at the movement that was happened in this board meeting, and so for all those people watching at home, we are meeting in the summer and doing great things. So, thank you.
I think we can summer off. It's funny that you say that. My husband said before I came tonight, what could you possibly have to talk about in the middle of the summer? I'm like, oh, it's the longest agenda we've had all year. It's been really, it has been the longest agenda all year, full of really important things and very important decisions. And I just really appreciate how everyone up here has kept our students' needs, number one, when it comes to making these decisions and really putting that out in the forefront. It's been really exciting to see all of the, this whole master facility conversation started over three years ago, and we're finally to a point where some big decisions can be made, and that's exciting. On top of that, it's been really extra exciting to see the full circle of community conversations and listening sessions, and now we're saying, we heard what you said, and this is what we're going to bring back to you to vote on and to help, help make that decision on what that looks like. So, it's been exciting to, to really see that come full circle and really see the, the needs and the wishes of our community, our teachers, our students, our businesses. I mean, that was 90-plus meetings that you had to determine what, what is the best, what does everyone want, and bring it full circle to this. So, I've really enjoyed this process. I, I know tonight's not culminating, but I've just enjoyed the process in general, and, and really, I think we as a board have done a great job of communicating that this is what our community wants, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Me?
Yes.
For some of us, it's been seven years, the master facility plan, but yes. I, I again want to say to Adam and his team, thank you for the heavy lift that, that this is. You not only had to deal with year-end, but, you know, putting together the bond issue stuff, so I do appreciate that. And kind of like what Christina said, and I think what everybody said, is that we've come a long way, and I think, were you here, was this your first meeting a year ago?
July.
July.
I was in the audience, but not yet at the time.
Yeah. So, I mean, you've done a lot in your year, probably more than you thought you would do in your year, and that, that I am, like Christina said, proud of us, that, that we have kept the focus on students, that we have tried to make sure that we're doing best, what's best for our students, that we're doing what's best for the education and their future, not just the students today, but the students hopefully 30 years from now. And that we do all keep that singular focus on what is best with being fiscally responsible of our taxpayer dollars. So it goes hand in hand, and I think it's a collective effort to be able to do all that, and to be able to have a discussion where we may not agree, and, and have it be civil. That, that's, that's really important for me, that, you know, that we are able to sit down and have a discussion and not agree. So, I just, I, you know, I feel like we're all being so melancholy, but I do just want to thank everybody, and thank my fellow board members, and my girl that cuts my hair said, oh, yeah, you're off for the summer, right? You don't have board meetings. I'm like, why do people think that? But we do. Okay, Adam, you're up. We've talked a lot tonight, though.
We were, we were getting ready to be off for most of the summer if you guys wouldn't have approved those fiscal 26 appropriations. But, yeah, I'd mark down that I believe that the bridge contract took over on July 1 of last year.
Yeah.
So, congrats on 365 days into Dr. Whitley. As Ms. Logan had told me when I first came here, it's like dog years at Lakota, so I guess you got seven years of experience this year. A big thanks to all the people, the, the summer months seem like it's kind of the, the support staff, you know, thanks to all the people that are working hard every day to get the buildings prepped, to get everything working seamlessly when the kids do come back, because a lot goes into making, making it look easy, and everybody does such a great job with that. Big shout-out, ending fiscal '25 to the finance team, the Welcome Center, Mr. Oskley for what he's done, Ms. Davis for prepping all of the salary notices that have went out, and getting ready for the giant group of people that are coming up, thanks to the whole team, couldn't do it without them. They keep me sane most of the time. And I did get, I, I sent to the board that was on at the time, we got a Facebook reminder of between meetings when three years ago was the approval for my contract to take over. I can't believe it's been that long ago. I still want to thank you guys for the opportunity. I still appreciate being able to be part of the Lakota community and part of all of this, and working with Dr. Whitley. So that has been an awesome experience, although it does result in a lot of sleepless nights and a lot of headaches that you just wish you didn't have. And finally, congrats to the board. Congrats to Lakota for planning for the future. No matter what it has, this has been a road that we have been on since I've been here. It feels like this has been, you know, a place that I think a lot of us wondered if we would ever get to. So, congratulations on that, and look forward to all of the extra work that that's going to take as we go to get there. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, tomorrow has been a full year, which is very, very exciting. You know, I recently was traveling, and sometimes when you're traveling, people naturally ask you, you know, what do you do, or, and that's always such a wonderful conversation, right? And then they're like, how big are you? Oh, we have roughly 18,000 children, and they're like, what? They're just the faces. But, you know, I've lived in this community for about 20 years now, and I've always loved being a community member, but being able to work in the community that you live to really support our staff and our students in the direction of our school district has been really just rejuvenating work, and this year has helped me grow. And I think as a board, we have certainly grown in our time together, and so I look forward to what the future is going to bring, because I think there are further great things for us to do together.
Yeah, I guess I'm struck by the, the how might we? You know, we've been, we've been trying to get to the point, it's kind of funny, year and a half, three years, seven years, you know, it, we've all been working to get to the point where how might we provide better opportunities for our students academically, as well as just the whole infrastructure and how it works? How might we provide neighborhood schools that our communities want? And if we have 10 K5 schools, we can answer that call of my students with special needs does not do well with transitions, having three versus five. Like, how might we address class size? We've heard that forever. And we, there are fiscal limitations, and I'm so hopeful of the opportunity of this plan that we just put in place, and Adam talks about, you know, landing the plane. I think it might be landing the helicopter, because it's sort of feeling like, you know, we've got to get this just right. And when we started this and looking at that master facility plan and the sticker shock, and then of course, after the sticker shock, construction costs did nothing but escalate. And if you would have told me then, that with the way bonds are rolling off, and we're rolling things on and timing everything, that we could potentially achieve all of this with an increase of 2.66 mils, and, you know, I think of a local district that put a 13 mil levy on, you know, and like what we could accomplish with simply 2.66, and that that can actually provide more opportunity than a more costly alternative. I mean, I just, I feel, I didn't think I'd feel this way voting this, because you never want to, it, it's never a comfortable spot, asking our taxpayers for more funds. But when I look at the possibilities here of how might we and what we could accomplish with this additional funding, I think it will be a huge step for Lakota in getting us where we want to be to prepare all our kids for our future, for their future. So, I'm, even though my last one graduated, I'm feeling very energized about the potential for those coming behind and what that means, and what we can do to support them. So, thank you to everyone on the entire team for their hard work on that. Thank you for three years of service in getting us to this point. Thank you for one year of service in getting us to this point, and again, the collaboration that is required for us to get where we need to be between the two of you working on that presentation. So, thank you. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Zink, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.